Mr. Updegroove?
Push it in.
Mr. Updegroove?
Which one?
Roger Updegroove?
Here.
Mrs. Owada?
Here.
Mr. Brophy?
Here.
Ms. Deroff?
Present.
Ms. Kratz?
Here.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegroove?
Here.
Mr. Penarello?
Here.
All nine present.
Okay, if we go all rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge and disciply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of School Directors held an executive session on the following dates, August 26, 2025. The topic was personnel. It lasted approximately 65 minutes.
Takes us to our recognition showcase, and for this evening, I'd just like to update our board and members of the community who are attending and listening this evening. Just have a few updates on the first couple of days of school. And first and foremost, I want to thank all of our staff for their efforts over the summer in preparing our district, the buildings, involved in all the staffing and hirings, and basically just the overall preparedness for us to be ready to accept our students this past Monday. So just to recap a little of the last three weeks, the week of August the 11th was our new teacher induction week, and that's where we invite our new teachers in, acclimate them to a lot of the nuances to the district, go through a number of mandates required by the state. And as you're aware, as a board, this induction process is required by state code. Mentees are also invited in at different points throughout the process. So just to give you a little bit of flavor of what our new teachers are this year, we have an opportunity to share with you an opening day video that we shared with our full staff, but having each of our new teachers introduce themselves to you as a board and to our community as well. So Mrs. Moyer, if you would please share that with the board at this time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ava Anderson. I am teaching fifth grade English at Boyertown Elementary School. A fun fact about me is that I'm actually a floral designer and I specialize in weddings and events.
Hi, my name is Ally Baker. I'll be teaching tech ed at Boyertown Area High School. And a fun fact about me is my high school mascot was a bubble.
Hi, my name is Emily Capazello. I'm the speech therapist for autistic support at Colbrookdale Elementary. And a fun fact about me is that I love reading.
Hi, I'm Mandy Capella. I'm teaching at Washington Elementary Life Skills, and I used to teach kayaking and paddle boarding.
Hi, I'm Lauren Cox. I'm the autistic support kindergarten teacher at Colbrookdale Elementary School. I have both visited and lived in Europe.
Hi, my name is Rachel Day. I'm going to be an autistic support teacher at Boyertown High School. And a fun fact about me is that this summer I just ran my first half marathon, and next summer I'm hoping to do a full marathon.
Hello, my name is Brenda DiDonato. I'm a learning support teacher at New Hanover Elementary. And a fun fact about me is I love clamming.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Elko. I'm the incoming school counselor at New Hanover Elementary and Washington Elementary. And a fun fact about me is that I do medieval fencing.
Hi, my name is Montana Robbins. I'll be an emotional support teacher at Gilbertsville Elementary. And a fun fact about myself is that I have a two-year-old lab named Bailey.
My name is Lauren Haley. I'm going to be at Gilbertsville, and I'm going to be teaching fifth grade ELA. A fun fact about me is that I actually graduated from Boyertown in 2017.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Holman. I will be teaching ceramics here at BASH this year. A fun fact about me is that I own over 200 art books.
Hi, my name is Emily Hunt. I will be teaching English as a second language here at Boyertown Senior High, at Junior High East, Junior High West, and Washington Elementary. And one interesting thing about me is that I am starting my 18th year of teaching.
Hi, my name is Bradley Landis. I'm a fifth grade teacher at New Hanover Elementary School. And an interesting fact about me is I've had 22 dogs over my entire life.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tanya Laramore. I'm going to be the new certified school nurse at Middle School East. An interesting fact about me is I like to do living history and participate at World War II weekend at the Reading Air Show.
Hi, my name is Sydney Marsden. I'm going to be teaching life skills at Washington Elementary. And my fun fact is that I like hedgehogs.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Creedon. I'm going to be teaching eighth grade math at Middle School East. And an interesting fact about me is that I've been vacationing at the same family camp in New Hampshire since I was a baby. Now I take my husband and kids alone.
Hi, my name is Angelina Mazza. I will be teaching kindergarten at Gilbertsville Elementary, and I absolutely love Disney.
Hi, my name is Travis McCoy. I will be Earl Elementary as a learning support classroom teacher, and in my spare time enjoy fishing.
Hello, my name is Olivia Mulick, and I will be teaching third grade at Washington Elementary. And I recently moved to the area from New Jersey, and I have five sisters.
My name is Gina Paul Tucci. I'll be the third grade learning support teacher at Boyertown Elementary. And a fun fact about me is I love to travel, and I spent my summer in Alaska.
Hi, I'm Allison Palmer. I'm going to be teaching English at the senior high school. And a fun fact about me is that I'm moving back up to Pennsylvania right now, coming back from Virginia and getting married in October.
Hi, my name is Meredith Palmeri. I will be teaching kindergarten at Colbrookdale Elementary. One interesting thing about me is that my son and daughter were born on the same day, two years apart.
My name is Madison Sanfeliis. I will be the second grade teacher at Earl Elementary. And a fun fact about myself is I'm a beekeeper.
Hi, I'm Juliana Santiago. I'll be a district-wide speech therapist. And a fun fact about me is that I have a pet rabbit named Kerat Cake and a pet wiener dog named Frankie.
Hi, I'm Terry Shoal. I teach intervention at Gilbertsville Elementary. This will be my eighth year in the school, but my second year teaching intervention full-time. I worked for six years before that as an intervention para.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Shaner. I'll be teaching first grade at New Hanover Elementary. And a fun fact about me is I'm a Boyertown grad.
My name is Molly Shoemaker. I'm the physical therapist. I'll be district-wide. And I've played field hockey on four continents.
Hi, my name is Covington Smith. Covington is my first name. I will be teaching FCS at the high school. And an interesting fact about myself is I can do handstand push-ups.
Hi, my name is Ryan Stettner. I'm teaching health and phys ed at the high school. And my fun fact is I'm pretty sure I'm the only one of the new hires who can say that they've led a musical in Boyertown Area's school district. Shout out to the cast of Shrek 2016 Middle School East. And hi, Mom.
Hi, my name is Tabitha Temple. I am one of the high school emotional support teachers. Something interesting about myself, I became an ordained minister this year.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nick Vivian. I am split learning support between Washington and Gilbertsville. My fun fact is that my wife and I were both graduates in 2014 of BASH.
My name is Heather Whitmore. I'll be teaching intervention at Middle School West. And a fun fact about myself is that I went bowling with the 2011 Philadelphia Phillies.
Hi, I'm Kyle Williams. I'll be the health and PE teacher at Boyertown West. And my interesting fact is that I was born in Germany.
Hi, my name's Julia Williamson. I'll be the certified school nurse at Middle School West. And my fun fact is that I have two sons. One is a three-year-old, and one is an 11-month-old.
Hi, I'm Abby Wise, and I will be teaching intervention and kindergarten at Washington Elementary School, and I'm a Boyertown alum.
All right, well, wonderful. Hopefully you enjoyed that, got a little sense of many of the new teachers. Just to give you some other statistics with regard to onboarding and preparing professional staff, we, Mr. Hahn and his department, as well as many others here in the education center, prepared over 30 new professional staff that were hired this summer, six long-term substitutes who became contracted professional employees, and 14 professional professionals who also transferred within the district. In addition, the team also hired and onboarded 18 support staff members who helped to support the district through various roles. So I want to thank everybody for their assistance related to interview panels, onboarding, and mentoring to all these recent hires over the summer. Congratulations to all those hires, and welcome to Boyertown. So during the week of August 19th, we did invite back all staff. Included in that back-to-school was an hour of welcoming everyone back to the district. We also took time through many mandated trainings that we had. One was an active shooter training that we, that took place with all professional, all employees in the district. We also had an ethics training that took place with all professional employees. Our teachers worked through many of the MTSS initiatives and goals that we have for the 25-26 school year. In my keynote address back to the staff, I asked them to consider a couple of facts, and I'll share those facts with you here as a board as well. The first is kindergarteners starting just this past week will retire in 2085. Take a minute for that to sink in, right? If the retirement age of 65 maintains, 2085 for all of our starters in kindergarten. In 2060, our elementary students, the average elementary student, will be in their mid-40s and still taking advantage of the learning that they received while in school in their careers. And those are some interesting things to just stop and pause and think about. I think it gives us some perspective. I don't think we can say that we really can predict what the future is going to look like in 2016 or 2085. But I think some of the things that we can say, and this is what I did share with our, with our staff, is that we can certainly agree that, that our charge as educators will be, as our mission is, to continue to cultivate curiosity, foster critical thinking, and support decision-making abilities among our students, just like our, our plans and mission really does suggest. Lastly, I did want to just share with you the last couple of days. Obviously, we began school on Monday just yesterday, had a very successful day overall within the district. You know, transportation, safety, orientation, transitioning, all those things, along with teaching and learning, are most important in the first couple of days, and certainly during this first week of opening up and realizing school again for 25-26. Just a couple of other data points. Our first day enrollment here in the district was 6,191 students, K-12. Our senior class at BASH, the enrollment is 507. Our kindergarten, our kindergarten class was 388. Currently, we have alternative education placements, students that are placed out for various reasons, and we have 86 students across the district, K-12, that are placed. And we transported over the last two days 525 non-public school students. Those are students that are required to be transported by the district within a 10-mile radius of the circumference of our school district boundaries. And we have 525 of those. So kudos to working with our partners at Quigley and the challenges that exist with, with transportation today. And certainly, I think everybody's experienced a little bit more congestion on the roadways here in the last week as schools around the area have come back on. So I just want to thank all of our employees, our parents, our community for, for an effort in really bringing us back to a successful couple of days, and we look forward to many, many more here in the, in the coming days and weeks to come. So thank you.
That leads us to public comp period number one. No one has signed up. So at this time, I'll be looking for the approval of the August 12, 2025 committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented.
Mr. Roger Updegroove?
Yes.
Mrs. Owada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Ms. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegroove?
Yes.
Mr. Penarello?
Yes.
Motion passes 78.
Takes us down to the discussion and information section. So this evening, as shared back in the winter when we had our last update with regard to the planning and consideration of a turf field project, one of the, many of the outliers that still existed were the assertion of certain permits. Those permits through MPDES, as well as local permits related to Colbrookdale, and the finalized planning to which bid documents are prepared and readied are now at that point. We've invited Mr. Jamie Lynch from CHA to come back to give a brief overview of the project as it exists, the timeline for next steps, and all the components that are in this final bid document package. So, Mr. Lynch, welcome to the podium.
All right, very good. Thank you, Dr. David Heiser. Good evening. Congratulations on the start of another school year. I wish you all the best in the coming year. And as stated, I have an update for you this evening on the turf field project. Many of the slides that I have in the deck are the same slides that you've seen in past presentations. So tonight is just really an update as we get set to advertise for bidding. I'll go do a quick overview of both fields, the stadium field and Field 1. When last we met, we shared this image of the stadium field, and I'm pleased to say that we've completed the stormwater design. We have the NPDS permit in hand from the County Conservation District, and we have township approvals in, in place. Also, our work related to geotechnical is complete, including stormwater analysis. And so we are prepared with bid documents that create a field inside the track at the stadium that looks like this. This is an updated color rendering of the field that contains all of the sports lines for the various sports that would be inside the field. And all of the work is inside of the track. So it includes the turf field, new goalposts, and it displaces the throwing events for track, which will be over near Field 1. I've got another slide that shows that. Also included in the field project is safety netting at the ends of the field. Obviously, in this case, it would be at the end of the end zone to protect those track athletes who are in the D-zone from things like soccer balls or lacrosse balls from crossing over. So there's protective netting at the end of each field. And that netting is removable. The nets can be raised and lowered. The poles can be removed from their stanchions. And also, under the field is a new stormwater basin in accordance with local and county conservation requirements. That shaded area in blue is where an underground stormwater basin will be located. All of the drains in the field will drain to that basin. Stormwater is held and retained in accordance with the requirements, and then it leaves under the track through the existing stormwater outlet. Field 1, as it was presented in our prior meetings, is also a multi-sport field surrounded by a fence. It provides for a small bleacher stand, and it has a paved area for patrons beyond the fence. Here also, we've completed stormwater design, have the NPDS permit in hand, have the township approvals in hand, and completed geotechnical work and provided ADA spaces and access to this field. And in a color rendering, it begins to look like this. So both of those fields and their pertinences have been designed. Here at Field 1 is the location of the stormwater basin, which again is under the field, in the lowest side of the field, and all of the underdrains and the stormwater around the field go to this basin, drain to this basin in accordance with Conservation District and Township requirements. Just an overview of what's in the bids for each of the fields is listed here on this slide. So you see the multiple sports that are provided on both fields. At the stadium field, there's two-tone turf, netting, as I mentioned, at either end. We have the same netting at Field 1. Logos at the center of the field, names in the end zones, all things that are pretty standard fare with turf fields of this type for K-12. A new flagpole at the stadium has been provided in relocation, as I mentioned, of field events. Both fields have the prerequisite underdrain systems as well for stormwater. Accessories that are included in the bid include football goalposts at the, at the stadium field, the ball netting, which I described. We've got electric at the stadium, the aluminum benches, new soccer goals, corner flags, lacrosse goals, field hockey goals, shot put circle, all of those things that are necessary for the track, field, and sports events. Also associated with the turf, the owner receives a new turf groomer, a turf sweeper for the maintenance of the turf, annual GMAX testing for the entire warranty period. That's a test that's done annually to confirm that the infill is installed properly and that we have a safe and proper score on that GMAX test. Training will be provided for the groundskeeping crew for grooming, sweeping, and repairs. There'll be a local vendor provided for any emergency maintenance, and there'll be extra turf material and infill provided to the district so that they can use it as they need to across the life of the fields. This is a cross-section of the turf field that you can't quite read from your seat, but I'm sure that you can blow it up on board docs. And it simply identifies the two components, I should say, three components of a turf field, and that is the turf itself, the blades. Both fields are the exact same product height. It's a monofilament with a 2-inch blade with infill. Underneath that turf product is a shock pad, which is provided for additional safety. And then underneath the shock pad is a very specific drainage stone that allows the turf field to drain when it rains at up to 22 inches per hour. On the left-hand side is the spec for how that stone is fabricated at a quarry, brought in, and placed on the site. So that's really the cross-section of the turf field, and it's the same for both fields. With respect to vendors for the turf products, we've provided a list of the vendors that are commonly employed to build turf fields of this type for K through 12. There's a chart here that provides the names of those vendors, and we leave the bid open so that all of these vendors can submit bids. And then on bid day, we provide bid alternates so that you'll see the cost of each vendor, and together we'll make a selection based on the cost of the vendor. So all of the vendors are there, they're listed. It's really an open bid. These are comparable products, all 2-inch polyethylene fibers, and they all have their own recipe for infill, but they're all rather comparable products. Each of these vendors also provides a very important piece of documentation to the districts, and that is a certification that their product does not contain harmful chemicals. It's a certification that is really new in the synthetic turf industry, and it's been mandated by all of the questions that have been raised over the past several years. So each of these vendors provides a certification that their product does not contain materials or substances that are above regulatory limits. Just a list of installed fields in the area. We've got quite a list here. This was a list that was actually developed and requested by the township as a part of the approval process. So you note here that 17 of 30 NFL teams have synthetic turf. Many of the top-tier Division I colleges have synthetic fields, including local colleges, Lehigh, Lafayette, et cetera, that are listed there. And then there's countless school districts in the region. Most of these are in Berks, Montgomery, North Hampton, Lehigh County that have existing synthetic turf fields. As a side note, one of the requests of the township during the approval process, they asked for some more environmental information, and we made many phone calls and reported back to the township after talking to these districts to find out if any of them had experienced any issues with changes in the content of their water, any testing that they were asked to perform, any other issues associated with their synthetic turf. And we really received zero responses of any problems that they had related to their turf installations. Alternate bids. There's a number of alternate bids that we'll consider in order to have a cost-based decision before you, when the bids come in. I'll go through them rather quickly here, just so that you can begin to digest them. And if there are any other questions that the board may have, if you funnel them through the superintendent, I'd be happy to get back to you to help you understand what they mean. The first one that's listed here is a very simple alternate for unclassified excavation. And what that means is both fields are underlaid by local shale, rock-like geology. And what the classified and unclassified means is the base bid means that whenever we find rock that we have to remove with a hammer, we have to pay for it per cubic yard. The unclassified alternate sends the risk of the rock to the contractor, and he'll state the cost to assume that risk. And so we'll look at what that cost is together on bid day and make a determination if it's a good value. So base bid, we pay for rock. Alternate, the rock is paid for by the contractor, but we'll see an add on bid day for that unclassified risk that the contractor takes. Excuse me. We also have a couple of alternates for infill, and it's two alternates, to be clear. And it's an alternate bid on each field. As you know, the stadium field is the base bid, and Field 1 is the alternate add for the project. So we're either doing one or two fields or no fields, depending on how bids come in. But what we've done is add alternates for infill. And the two alternates are described simply as this. One is you know that most of the infill that's used today is a mix of crumb rubber and sand. And an alternate that we commonly apply for two reasons. One is to coat the crumb rubber with a product that encapsulates the crumb rubber, but also usually is a lighter color, so it tends to make fields in the south cooler. It's not something that we can really measure here in the Northeast because we don't have extreme temperatures, and we don't have a lot of sports that are playing in the, in the dead of summer. But it's a protective coating on the crumb rubber, and it also accounts for temperature. That's the one infill, coated infill. The other alternate for infill is for an organic infill. It's called Brock Fill, and this is a product that is really a wood chip infill, and it's been used in numerous locations. We don't have an installation here in eastern Pennsylvania that I can cite for you, but it's been gaining ground in other locations. But it is an organic infill, and it's made of wood chips. So we're going to take a look at what that product adds or deducts from the cost of the project. And then those infills are made alternates for each of the fields. So we'll have a decision, one or two fields, and you'll have a decision of which infill to use on each field. Hopefully, I've said that as clearly as I can, but I'll be happy to answer questions here in a moment. Estimated cost for the project, this slide is exactly the same as it was the last time I was with you. So there have been no changes there as far as total cost. Project schedule update. This is the slide that I shared with you the last time that I was here. We've now, of course, received township approval and the NPDS permit, and so that sets in motion the ability to go out for bid, advertise bids, puts the rest of our schedule together. And the great benefit is that you've acted very early. So I believe that your project is going to get great attention from contractors who want to fill their books for next summer, bidding nice and early. That allows them to get a jump on procurement and not be in line with other districts who are doing projects that they bid after the new year. And so we've put a schedule together that identifies how we go through the bid process, the award meeting in October, followed by presumably a notice to proceed, and our construction schedule really remains the same. Procurement will happen at the end of the year and into the spring. We would mobilize on the field outside We would mobilize on the field outside of the stadium, Field One, sorry, there's a typo there, in March. And then when track ends in the stadium, we would mobilize on the stadium field in May. So it works out very well. You've got one contractor who would be doing this work, starting on one field as early as he can in March, moving to the other field with substantial completion at the end of August. And really, those are our next steps, to advertise for our public bids, conduct a pre-bid meeting. We'll receive and tabulate bids, come to the board for its action. And assuming a project moves forward, execute contract. And just as I mentioned, get shop drawings and procurement underway so that Boyertown is first in line for work next spring. With that, I'd be happy to entertain questions that you might have.
For the Field One, we were supposed to have some type of protection there for the house that's there. I don't see that on here.
So there are nets that have been installed. As I mentioned, there are field nets, the same ones at the end of the field. And there's also a line of trees that are up the slope in front of that house. That's what's been incorporated in the design. It's in the documents that we flip through with the administrative team. And we could share them with you if you like. Absolutely. Yes?
So basically, just for information, the field will be able to support band?
Yes, that's the short answer. Band is on many of the turf fields that we've installed. And it all depends on how heavy the use is. But it's an absolute permissible thing to have on the field. As you can imagine, in any stadium field, the band is both practicing and performing on that field. We have many fields in use where there are band competitions. And so no problems with band on the field. Yes?
We had a lot of meetings with the township and got permits, et cetera. How much money have we spent totaling so far to get where we're at?
I would have to discuss that with the business office to get you that number. So we had our pre-construction fees, and I would have to give you a tally of that. There was a permit fee from the township. There was also a permit fee submitted to the conservation district. So I think if I work with the business office, we could put those numbers together and send them your way.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Oh, the other thing was, I see more on one of the documents. It said you were putting a cement pad down for the bleachers, but the bleachers would be at our expense?
So the bleachers, yes, would be at the district's expense. The cement pad is simply one for a loose bleacher to sit on them.
So that cost wouldn't be in here?
Yes, and I'll confirm that for you because I just want to confirm if we have that in the spec or not. You have them? Okay, great, all right. So the district has them, there's not an additional expense, just to be clear.
Has what?
The bleachers. You currently own them.
Aren't we lucky? What are we doing with them? Do we have them in storage?
They're on the field right now, we're using them. They're just going to be placed on a cement pad instead of on the grass like they are now.
Okay. The water underneath, we already have drains underneath the football field.
Correct.
So we can't use those drains?
So in short, the conservation district and the township consider synthetic turf to be impervious. In other words, they consider it to be asphalt. And so they require additional drainage. So not only are we using the drainage that's on the fields now, we're supplementing it with additional stormwater storage, which are the two blue boxes that are under the field to hold stormwater.
Okay, so do we have to have that tested?
No, there's no testing requirement.
Okay, because I thought the drains were in pretty bad shape that we have on the field now. I just want to make sure of that.
Well, all of those drains at the surface will all be replaced as a part of the project because there's an elevation difference, and there's a stone layer that goes in. And there won't be inlets, if you will, on the field like there are now. Everything flows through the field and into the collection pipes that are under the field in the new design.
So we'll be ripping them out?
Yes.
That's what I was getting after. Okay, so a lot of these things, it could be additions or deductions that we'll make at the end? For like, I was looking over this, and I didn't see any place where you're putting a new parking lot that you have that out for bid. I didn't see any place for where you're going to have the new shot puts area, whatever that's called.
Okay, there is not a new parking lot associated with the project. We're just doing-
We had to put one in.
You've got an existing parking lot at Field One that will be reused. There's an ADA accessible ramp that goes to the field and an asphalt path that runs around the exterior of the field. And I'm sorry, what was the other one? Oh, the shot puts, that is included in the bid, that the field events are relocated. That's included.
So that's in where they're going to be located and to make it up to what standards or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I didn't see that either. And that's good about the parking lot because that was in the first set that we had to make a bigger parking lot because we were using some of that parking lot for something.
I would have to refresh my memory, but we're not touching that parking lot other than to connect the ramp to the field. So I think we have adequate parking at that location, is that right?
Okay, that's good because it was in the original RFPs because I read it.
Okay.
So we aren't going to do nothing with the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. So this $7,490,000 is the estimate for both fields?
Yes.
And if we deduct Field One, is that the field hockey field?
That would be Field One and its multi-sport field. I don't know if the district refers to it as the field hockey field, but it's got the ability to play field hockey, lacrosse, soccer.
Okay, it's not the football field?
It's not the football field, it's not the stadium field.
So originally, when we talked about this, we could have did the turf for what we originally wanted for $22 million, $2.5 million.
I'm sorry, could you ask me that again?
Originally, they wanted turf field for the field hockey. So what you're, am I correct in understanding? We could have done that for $2.5 million?
I think I need a little district help on that one. The decided approach was because of the value that it provided to the district that turf inside the stadium track would be the most beneficial to the school district. And that turf is being set up to play field hockey, soccer, lacrosse, football. All sports can play on that field. And so because of where it was and its prominence and the fact that it has lights, that was identified as the preferred base bid with Field One being the alternate as the second field.
Okay, also in the other RFPs, it was then about the walkways? To have them, I don't see anything in this now.
Field One, as I mentioned, has a McAdam walkway around the entire perimeter and an ADA approach ramp.
And that's all going to be in the, that's all in the-
It's on the drawing that was in the presentation, yes.
So it'll be on the bid. Okay, how about bathrooms?
There are no bathrooms associated with the project.
Okay, and we don't have to have any?
I'm going to ask for the district help there.
Okay. I think that's all I have. The other question I have with to administration is when did administration, a date, month, something, ever come to this board and say that they were recommending we do this? Like any other project, we get, like you came to us with kindergarten and said you would like us to, you know, to think about that. But I cannot find any dates where administration ever came to us about turf.
I think this project has been going on for multiple years and even prior to my taking over here. But initially, I believe it was either January or February when I came onboard about six months ago. We did bring this and shared with the board the intentions of this project. So I do believe that, you know, we've kept the board up to date with regard to that.
I'm not debating that. You did keep us up to date, but when did administration ever say to us that they're recommending this?
I think I can answer that for you.
Yeah.
Two years ago, when the field hockey team brought it up to us, I would say within maybe six months of that, I put it on the agenda for the board to discuss. I don't remember the exact date, but I would say it was a board ago, two years ago, is when we started talking about it.
Right, but administration never came to us, that was my question.
The students came to us, and then I put it on the agenda for the board to discuss.
Administration, when we do a project like this, usually comes to us and says, just like they did, you know, for the, when we first originally talked about the planetarium. It was administration's recommendation that we don't go forward right now. When we talked about kindergarten, it was administration's recommendation we check it further. My question is, when did administration ever say to us that they recommended that we do the turf?
Well, I can't give you particulars in terms of that exactness, but what I can say is that our ambitions to continue where the previous administration left off and continue this process I think assumes some things in regards to that recommendation. So we did continue that process. This had been something that the now current administration picked up from the previous administration that had been stemming for some time prior to. I can't give the exactness of that. And we did pick that up to continue that process. And in doing so, have recommended that. We wouldn't be placing, we would have cut ties with that project back during the time of which we initiated continued planning services with CHA to continue that process of collecting the bid documents and ascertaining all the permits that are necessary. We knew that was going to be a lengthy, up-to-six-month timeline to be able to do that.
Because the previous administration did not recommend it.
Mr. Stell?
Yeah, I'm looking back on the records in board docs. And on February 27, 2024, there was a motion authorizing the administration to work with Fox Rothschild LLP on any necessary submissions to Culverdale Township for the artificial turf field project. So that was a process that had gone through with the motion by Mr. Zawada, Mr. Penarello. And it passed at that particular time. So if I'm remembering correctly, and I think that might have been in a building, it might have been in one of our, I don't think it was here.
I'm not debating that.
But I'm just, that's, I remember moving forward at that particular time to do the investigation.
Thank you, that wasn't my question though.
I believe the question that Mr. Thier was asking is when did the board, when did the administration come to the board and give a presentation to the board saying, "We would like the board to consider putting in turf fields for these reasons." And then at the same time, recommended it go on to the five- or 10-year plan for discussion and for financing. I think, I believe that's your question.
Well, thank you for clearly stating that. So again, you'd have to ask former administration as to the initiation of that process. When we began and I came onboard, that process had been underway. So again, our consideration to end meeting with former CFO, understanding the complexities of what we did or did not have when it came to, you know, our capital budget and this project, we did continue that process. And while maybe not make it specifically clear, certainly by continuing this process, this is something that the administration is recommending and has supported in, as a desire for our students and for the district.
Okay, so administration is the one that's been approving the expenses so far?
Excuse me?
The expenses so far, somebody has to be approving them or saying to pay them.
You approve those through the initial contract to which those go through, and most of which are the design fees associated, which also include all the permitting fees and include those types of things that are all part of those components. So that was inside of the contract when it relates to that.
I realize we vote on that, but somebody has to be telling the business office to pay the bills.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I don't remember it. But I want to say it was something like $240,000, something thousand dollars, not to exceed that. Anything above that, they have to come back to the board. And again, I don't know if that was the exact number, I'm just giving you a roundabout.
If you look at any motion that administration is recommending, it says administration recommends. This motion puts out authorizing the administration to, it's not the administration asking for this. It was certain people on the board asking for it, basically, and it was not. So if you go back and look at the motion, that'll tell you it was not administration asking for it.
I'm okay with that, though. I'll, if you want something on record, I totally want this for the kids. I put it on the agenda, me, I've always said that. I mean, is that what you're trying to figure out? That's what happened. Kids were here complaining, and I took action to put it on the agenda, and the board, as a board, voted on it.
That's the little confusion here. It was the field hockey team that asked for it, and now we're doing the stadium. So what did you agree to?
The administration, well, we didn't agree to anything, that's why there's two fields on there. We didn't agree to any of that yet. That's what the bids are going to come back to. But the administration recommended that it be that field, the football field.
I don't recall them ever recommending that. In fact, when Mrs. Torche was asked about, "Does the administration recommend going forward?", she did not answer.
The whole bid package was put together by the administration, that's their input.
At your direction?
No, 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 not at my direction. I asked them to put it together for what they need and want, that's what it is.
Your direction, they put it together at your direction?
Well, it wasn't with my input, it's their input, it's what they want. Okay, then it doesn't matter. Either way, this is irrelevant, this is informational.
It's true.
Mr. Seltonic, does the administration have to recommend or the board can tell administration to do something?
Legally, the administration does not need to recommend a particular project or not. The board has the authority to approve that, and in fact, the board did approve the contract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you.
That takes us down to item B, the CFO, business office updates. And I would like to introduce to our board who is familiar with Mr. Lentz already, but our public, those in attendance and those watching. Mr. Lentz is the CEO of EDM Financials LLC, which is running our interim business services as Mrs. Denacola has moved on to a different district as we continue our search for a new CFO. So we welcome Mr. Lentz here this evening, and he has just a brief update as we begin the school year, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lentz.
Thank you. So just to give the board and public an update of the work to date, I had the opportunity last week to transition with Ms. Denacola, talk about the work that she had been completing in progress with her team in particular as the school year was getting prepared for, working with payroll. And from that, I've already identified and begun to work with your audit firm on the annual audit. We're on track at this point to have that timeline be that the field work or the work of the audit will be completed in October. That will allow us to file the state's required annual financial report by the end of November, which is the normal timeframe. And I think will be a quicker, earlier schedule than in the past for the district. What that will help you do is to get a better sense of the financials for the previous year and also use as a basis for improved budgeting as we develop preliminary budgets moving into- moving into the next fiscal year. Also, we've already begun working to improve payroll, some of the feedback from the board with the transitions and the number of transitions with payroll. So we've been having meetings and in particular with a member of my firm's team who is very highly skilled and skyward to look at how payroll has been processed. I also think that one of the goals is to continue to improve not only the, the processing of the data with payroll, but also our collaboration internally in getting our data for payroll and I've already taken steps to have multiple teams come together to discuss and prepare for payroll, human resources changes, other matters that will help us not only improve the data, but also the understanding of the various moving pieces in a district with the number of staff that, that you have. Additionally, begin working with external departments and particular with pupil services and other offices with regards to rolling out the budget for this year with the goal that as we get further into the fall in the school year, we'll have a better understanding of our roles regarding the budget accounts that individuals have, as well as tracking spending throughout the year so that I can come back to you at various intervals during my tenure here and turn that over to the permanent CFO, updates to the board about where spending is in relation to budget, to again, not only have that be informed for decision-making, but also aligning the revenues that the district receives to expenditures. You'll hear in a little bit how the expenditures and revenues so far, you know, really haven't hit and in particular, when you look at a July, that there haven't been necessarily tax receipts, there hasn't been state subsidies that have rolled out, we're now off of a higher level of federal revenues for the district. As we get further into the year, we'll have better information to be able to track those as well as to communicate to you changes and variances so that we both have an understanding of the way the budget evolves throughout the year, as well as from an administrative standpoint, you know, we can be proactive in addressing any gaps and also addressing funds towards the district's goals and strategic plans.
Any questions for Mr. Lentz? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lentz.
Thank you.
Treasurer's report.
Tonight I'll be presenting two highlights from the July 2025 treasurer's report. Local revenue, total tax collection was 148,935.04. Earned income tax collection was approximately 1,429,056.74. And transfer tax collection was approximately 132,651.54. And in regards to what Mr. Lentz said, we are stagnant right now for state revenue. And for July's expenditures, for salaries, benefits and professional services, it accounted for 53% of our total expenditures for the month of July. That concludes my report.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
With our major accounts.
Ms. Fox, maybe a question here.
Sorry. With our major accounts, would it be possible to have it like what we were supposed to be spending monthly for each account and then what we actually spent in that month?
That would probably go more with the budgeting part of it.
And that way on this thing, we could see if we're within that month's budget or if we're out of that month's budget and what's left for the rest of the year?
Yeah, and I, I think actually in the treasurer's report, it does give percentages as to.
But I'd like to see it as July being, we have X amount of dollars, we spent this amount of dollars, we went over budget or we were under budget.
Okay, that's something I can work with Mr. Lentz with.
I think that could be very helpful for us to know whether we're staying within our budget or if we're out of our budget.
Okay.
I think we can work and I think to what Mrs. Fox is referencing, that's part of looking at the projections, there are some nuances to the budget. So for example, when you look at expenditures, you really have just, in an upcoming payroll, are going to start to have teacher salaries roll out for the year. So from, if you're thinking of a budget, it's hard to divide that because it doesn't really hit for July and August. For this year, your July and August teacher salaries actually go to the previous fiscal year, but I think we can give, give a sense and an assurance about how the budget stands as a whole so we can come back to and work with Mr. David Heiser and include that as part of our updates.
I think it just could give the board a better scenario of what's going on with our budget.
And that can also be comparable to what we have done in the previous years to see if we're on track with how we were spending at that time as well. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're looking for a motion to approve the July 1st, 2025 treasurer's report as presented.
I'll move. I'll say.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Ms. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Under the superintendent's consent agenda for this evening, we do have two items. The first is due to the nature of the exiting CFO, Boerstown must elect a delegate to the Berks County EIT Tax Collection Committee, Executive Committee. And the administration is recommending this morning to, or this afternoon to appoint Mr. Matthew Lentz as the district's delegate to the Berks EIT Bureau Executive Committee. The second item, item B, the August donation list, there are three items there, two of which were covered in the committee meeting, both the Shutterfly and the Ford Boerstown Elementary and Washington, there, we have added and since received one other donation and we're thankful for the Boerstown Optimist Softball, they wanted to donate a road, a road facing sign, it's approximate value, you can see listed there, $1,700, to identify the entrance of the sports complex behind Middle School East. So it allows those, those individuals coming from out of the area that come to compete knowing exactly where those fields are. And so we are recommending those three donation items for your consideration this evening. So it takes us to item C, which would be approval of the consent agenda.
Penarello moves.
I'll second. Question. With Mr. Lentz being our district delegate, it's not a permanent position for Mr. Lentz in case we find somebody, who would fill that position besides that if after Mr. Lentz was removed, lead the district?
So we, we would hope to then bring forward our new CFO would be, would take over in that position once, you know, we've transitioned completely and have a CFO in place.
Do the roll call vote, second please. Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Ms. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Penarello?
Yes.
Eyes have it, unanimous.
Takes us down to item nine, the superintendent's itemized agenda and we start with item A. This evening, we're, we're seeking approval of an agreement between CRES and the school district to bring forward an interim assistant principal to Bash High School. As you're aware, Dr. Bergy was appointed at a recent meeting to be the next Gilbertsville Elementary Principal and has already begun that next journey in his career. That leaves us without an assistant principal right now at a building that has considerable volume and we want to make sure for, certainly for safety reasons, that we have student management and other components under control and are seeking your approval this evening to move forward with that interim contract. With the individual listed in that, Glenn Malecki, needs to complete the onboarding process with CRES, which is the approvals and the clearances as such. So we are seeking your consideration this evening to bring that contract, so as soon as that is completed by that individual, we can bring her aboard to Bash. We do.
I'll move.
So we do have a motion to approve.
I'll move, two seconds.
Quick question, I don't mean to bring us out of left field, but I guess it is, some of us have come to this school and went through the high school and we had a principal and a vice principal. The vice person who used to be in charge of basically demerits that would send us, and I'm just wondering, at the level that we're at now, why, and again, you can get back to me, but why do we need a principal as well as three additional assistant principals and the cost that affects the school district?
Yeah, and I think I can answer that right now, we have graduating classes of over 500 students. In today's management of a school alone, that's pretty significant. We align one of those assistant principals to those 500 students and that's a pretty significant ratio, one to 500. Along with that, we have a staff of nearly 200 there of professional employees to whom need to be observed multiple times throughout a year, evaluated throughout a year. The mandates that are placed now on a school district and it's, you know, serving schools are considerably different than they once were with that and, you know, our first concern is always safety and not having a ratio that we feel comfortable in being able to simply manage the components of a day-to-day operations in a school is significant. You know, in, in other school districts and not meaning to compare, but we've seen, I've seen ratios that are, that are far less in relation to student to principal or assistant principal ratios when it comes to all of that. So that's really the, the belief behind that and why we are able to successfully navigate a school year and did have this past year, a very, very successful school year in doing so with that ratio.
I do want, I would never be against safety and if that's, but classes of 78 graduated with 504 students, so again, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate the answer and we'll move on from there, but I just always wanted to ask that question. I'll take the vote, thank you. Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Ms. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Penarello?
Yes.
Eyes have it, eight to one.
Under item B, Board Secretary Appointment, again, a function of our past CFO, has been the representative Board Secretary. This evening, we are recommending the appointment of Matthew Lentz to act as the Acting Board Secretary. We did put a date of effect of August 25th, 2025 and ending on August 12th, 2026, not knowing an end date, again, as Mr. Zawada had referenced, if and when a new CFO and permanent CFO is appointed, this would be altered to move that individual and consider a, an appointment for the Board Secretary position at that point.
Zawada moves.
I'll second. Ms. Deroff?
Do we give him also permission to sign checks and so forth?
We are. He is the interim CFO, so he has the duties and obligations as such.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it, I just want everybody to understand it.
Yes.
Because it's never mentioned.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll take the vote. Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Ms. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Penarello?
Yes.
Eyes have it.
Now, under item C, Personnel, Recommendation to approve the personnel agenda as listed.
I move.
Zawada seconds.
Ms. Nyman?
I see Mr. Landen is leaving, do we have a reason why?
Mr. Landen? He's taking another position at a local district.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Ms. Kratz?
Yeah, I just quickly noticed that there's a teacher under support staff, I don't know that that matters, but like under leave of absence, we have a teacher that's listed under support staff. Shouldn't she be under a professional staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I can make that.
Okay.
I'll make that correction, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Penarello?
Yes.
Eyes have it, eight to one.
No one has signed up for public comment period number two, so that will go to board comment. Ms. Updegrove, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes, can somebody give an update on what is going on with our Stop Finder? I don't know what it was called in the past, but I've had several comments from parents wanting to know, they can't get on the app anymore and what's going on and I said, well, we changed it, but I don't know what else is going on.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Steltonic, you've been linked to this.
I do, so the, recently, as of this past Sunday, the GPA, and Mr. Quigley's here also, there, there's two components to it, each individual bus or van has required a new GPS unit and they were officially completed this past, this past weekend, I think it's upwards of almost 200 GPSs were put in about a two-week timeframe. That was the first component, Mrs. Moyer had put a communication out to our community outlining the process of what was taking place. Quigley Bus Service can monitor all of our buses from a safety perspective to know where they are. The next step is to communicate with the TransFinder system, which is going to connect an app that is going to be a process that parents will have access to, that's the next stage of the, of the completion of this project. We are going to work on a timeline for that and how quickly that is going to happen, I can't speak to because it's going to be kind of a stage process to make sure it all connects, parents can have access that is consistent and then moving forward, we would give access to our whole community. So our goal was after the first month or so of school to possibly have something up and running, but we won't know that until we do a couple pilots to make sure everything's good at that point.
I can tell you from the people I've talked to, including my son and daughter-in-law, they did not receive a communication and there's a lot of others that are out there that did not receive communication.
Yeah, and I did check with Mrs. Moyer and there was, it was the top item in our newsletter that went out, what we planned to do and thanks for bringing that to our attention, we'll, we'll highlight that in a separate, just a separate communication before the week's end for folks, just updating them. end for folks, just updating them a lot of what Mr. Stout said with regard to that. So, something went out, I believe it was the Wednesday or Thursday last week prior to the start of school. However, some folks may have not seen it inside the newsletter. That's the top story.
I think a special letter going out to all the parents needs to be done because there's a lot of confusion out there and they want to know where their kids are. And I said, trust me, they're fine, but we need to get that out to them.
Yep.
We made sure that the safety was paramount and they worked diligently to get the GPSs in so the buses could be tracked internally and we specifically articulated that that was the priority to make sure. And quite honestly, I'm so happy that it was done this past weekend because it was getting close with school starting on Monday, but the, we'll make sure we do that.
Can I just cut in on that for a second? This is part of the Zone RZ program where you have GPS on the buses and you also have, I guess, cards for the kids to get on the buses so they register coming on. There's a bus, there's a Zone RZ program out there also where it logs the kid, like, and when you're saying the GPS is on the bus, it logs the kids onto the bus and it logs the kids off the bus so that the parents, the kid, know the kids are on the bus when they get on and they get off. That program's out there. Now, there's a cost to that program, so it's about, I think, $26,000 implement and about $350, $350 a year to maintain. So, just, I don't know, I don't know if you were even aware of it or you had looked into it or you talked about it?
When we were investigating the process, this has been a long, a year-long process to look at that and there are more elements and components. We wanted to make sure that we had the foundation in place and then we can look to do an additional, additional items. There's various, there's various devices that drivers could have on the bus to do certain things like that, but we were not moving in that direction to start. It was the key thing with the, the kind of the GPS mechanisms were to the point where the replacement needed to happen and it was going to be a process to evaluate.
Yeah, well, this was a part of that, I think, also where it logs that the kid is on that bus and the kid has gotten off that bus. So, I think that's, that's part of it. I don't, I don't know if you were aware of it or you looked into it or that was just something that wasn't all part of what you were doing at this point.
It is, those, those additional features were investigated, but were not decided to move forward at this particular time, but can be considered in the future.
How about Bus Patrol? Have you looked at Bus Patrol? That's, that's the cameras installed?
Yeah, Quigley, actually, Amy Quigley has already committed and submitted grants in terms of Bus Patrol for us. We're still waiting to hear back in terms of that to install on certain high-level buses that we find that to be in, not all of the buses, but in some of those, those areas where there's high traffic.
Lots of revenue sharing also.
Yeah.
So, any violations after the equipment's paid for, you get a portion of that.
Yes, that's, that's, that's shared with the Police Department and so forth.
But also, once again, a big thing on safety, once it gets around, it, you pass a bus.
Yeah.
You're going to be in trouble.
Yeah.
Seems like, seems like a pretty decent program. Those two things are out there and that one's at no cost.
It is. I'm pretty familiar with the Bus Patrol program as we've had that in, and a former district of mine that had been in and it was successful. I would assume the other thing you're speaking of, that would be ID-related, right? They'd have student ID badges that they swipe on those buses.
Swiping on the bus.
Yeah.
They swipe getting off the bus. That way, when you, when you brought up the fact that we're following the GPS, that would go along with that because now parents know the kid got on the bus.
Right.
And parents know the kid got off the bus. So, and also know where they are when they're on the bus. So, that's why I brought it up. That's, like I say, that's a head cost program that you have to pay for. It's like $26,000 and then there is, there is a yearly fee for that.
Are we going to look into that? Because that would be ideal, the parents would know probably then if their son or daughter got off at a wrong stop.
Yeah, we'd have to look at to see if that's independent of the new, I don't, what we've got, GPS, I guess, that we just installed to see if that's an add-on to which that software or that hardware can take on in terms of that.
I think that could be very safety.
It, it could. We're, you know, there'd be a lot of training with regard to, you know, one of the components of the ID badge, right?
But we're talking safety of our students.
No doubt. And this is, I'm not so much talking training of our adults, this is training of having every student wear an ID badge through that. So, there's some challenges. I, you know, I, what we, what we need to get up and running is, our first concern was to be able to run buses so that we could track and Quigley could track those buses in real time. We have that operational and we're able to do that. Our next step is hopefully within the next 30 days, being able to allow that access to parents to get on that app so that they can track their bus and they can, they can understand the proximity levels of the bus. After that, then we can look at, are there additional things that we can include and what are the benefits and costs to some of those things too?
I would hope that's one of them because that could be very beneficial to parents to know, yes, my child's on that bus, it did not get off at the wrong stop, whatever.
Ms. Kratz?
First, I just want to wish everyone a good school year. Second, I just want to say I really enjoyed the school visits that we were invited to last year. Unfortunately, the high school visit was canceled due to weather, but I'm sure it'll be rescheduled and I would just encourage everyone to go if they're able. It really helps you understand, or it helped me understand just what goes on in each building, how hard everyone's working and how busy they are.
Ms. Scott?
Ms. Deroff?
Okay, some good news. Congratulations to Trey Yessavage. I hope I pronounced your name.
Yessavage, yeah.
Ms. Deroff, can you turn your microphone?
I'm going to start all over. Congratulations to Trey.
Trey Yessavage.
Yessavage.
Yessavage, yeah.
Who was moved up to AAA Buffalo Bison's for the Toronto Blue Jays on August 11th. You can tell I'm a good sports person. Trey's the, has been working very hard and determination. This is what he can do. Keep up the great work, Trey. We are all very proud of you and we will wish you the best on your journey to play baseball in the major leagues. Go Blue Jays. Boy, that was a bummer. Okay, I have a couple questions. Do we have to hire more support staff for food services? I see we had one last time.
Are we completely filled in food services?
We have roughly two part-time roles that we need to fill.
No, last time we approved one and it said NA, so I assume it's a new.
That's substitutes.
Oh.
Substitute, we're, we have a substitute pool for food services. So, there are individuals that we're just hiring, putting them in the pool. People take off, get sick, we can plug and play, so, yep.
Okay. I didn't know what that was. And Admin Assistant for Student Services, when did we approve that position? I know we voted for it last meeting, but when did we approve that position? And I haven't seen the job description for that we're supposed to approve. A job description where we put a new position on.
Mr. Allen, do you have any information on that admin?
So, the Admin Assistant position is one that is working with student services and school safety. So, that was, I, I don't have a date in regards to when that discussion was, was had, but obviously with the amount of work that Officer Bohm is doing with truancy, there was a need there and there was also a need for Dr. Horton to have an individual assist with, with some grants and some different things that are going on in, in pupil services. That individual will also assist as needed with any overflow that may occur within the Athletics Department as well. I can look for a date. I don't know when that was discussed, but I can.
We got information from Administration about what that position would entail, but we never were asked to approve it and it was, we didn't get a job description, like just that this person could use the help, that person could use the help, who did the work before. We keep getting less students and one thing I hear from the public continuously, stop hiring administrators, stop hiring secretaries. You've got more secretaries than you do students. I know that's what you're going to say, but that's what I'm hearing. That's what gets hobbled at me. So, according to our policies, we're supposed to approve a position before we hire someone, number one, and we're also supposed to approve a job description, which I don't think we did either. And who did the work before? Who did the truancy? Who did, Rafe used to do that, so.
Well, I know from, from that perspective, Officer Bohm is utilizing a few different folks at the high school that are helping with just coordinating and keeping, you know, notes and things like that. He writes everything, but with the, with the sheer number, he's utilizing, often, I can't remember the individual's name. The job description is a generic Admin Assistant job description that talks about some of the key functions that Admin Assistants do. I, and again, for, I, I don't know when the date was that we, we talked about adding that role, but I can get you that date.
Well, I want to know the day we talked about it. I want to know when we voted for it and I want a proper job description like we get for other things. And then that, I, I want the policy followed because every time I say something, I get another thing way out here that it is and I, I'd like to know. We had appointed Mr. Stout January 28th of '25, okay? Well, we also appointed Mr. Bohm for that same position and, and adjustment in his pay on July 16th of '24.
Yeah, those are two separate components, so.
Components that gives the same title.
So, a school sa, while it may give the same title, what Mr. Stout has been appointed and what must be registered with PCCD is that we must have a, an SSC, a School Safety Coordinator. So, he is the report mechanism to the board. He is, and if you recall, in an executive session, reported out on the, the various types of Safe to Say's, the various types of threat assessments, the various types of things that the district has initiated throughout. He oversees and coordinates Safe to Say with regard to that. Mr. Bohm's role as Safety Coordinator is a physical role here in the, in the district in which he oversees all of the SROs. He coordinates all of the SROs. He is supervisor to all of those SROs and acts in that role. So, while they say the same, they are completely two different things as it relates to the responsibilities that are part of that. Mr. Bohm, Officer Bohm is an SRO. He has the additional component of being then the supervisor in regards to that. So, there's a little bit of difference in clarity when it, when it comes to those types of things.
Okay, who did that job before him?
Who did the?
Before Mr. Bohm did it?
Did, go ahead.
So, that was, that was Officer Perez. Officer Perez was the School Safety Coordinator hyphen School Police Officer. So, when he retired, that's when Officer Bohm was appointed in that role as School Safety Coordinator hyphen School Police Officer to oversee the other SPOs that are in the district.
Okay, the other thing, way back, we used to have a Superintendent's Roundtable. You probably are not familiar with that, maybe you are. I, I would like to see us institute that again because it had great benefits, I thought, told us what other districts are doing and, and I think it was a very good idea. I don't know why it stopped as one of the superintendents.
I, I don't know. I don't have any history of that. Maybe you could provide me some, it doesn't have to be tonight, but provide me some history of that. I'd certainly be able to, to look into that and see what we can do in 2025 as, as to what that is. Do you have an idea of when that ended and what year?
I have to talk to my brain.
I mean, are we within the last couple of years or is this more five, 10 years or?
More than 10 years, probably.
Okay, so why don't, why don't you, you and I connect on some of the history of that and we can see what, what that means.
And we used to have a program after school down at East and it was kind of for the kids that had no place to go and for if they needed help with homework or they needed help with, if anything. It was called From the Hearts and it was, it was a great program and I'd like to see us look into that because not all kids play sports and not all kids do music. And, and we have a lot of kids out there that have no place to go after school. So, I'd like you to, like.
It was called From the Hearts?
Yeah. And maybe we could have, because I know one year, I have to look on the, on the, on the, they sold books, they did a, why can't I think of, they did a food book. All right?
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll look into a little bit of that. We do have some different clubs that are named, different things that I believe are.
They didn't, they didn't charge money, they didn't pay, everything was.
Yeah, and we do have some of those, and I'll check with, with Mr. Maori in regards to whether or not, and maybe rename something a little bit different, I believe.
I'm going back maybe 10 years on that too.
So, all right.
But I'll look in their cookbook because they, they did a cookbook, see if there's anything in there that tells me anymore because they, I've sold enough of those. Okay, also on our policies, we have a policy, Function Three, with Evaluation of Board Procedures. We've never done that and it's one of our policies, we're supposed to do it every year for, for our local board procedures and I think I'm suggesting maybe leaders should read that and see if we can do something, it might bring us closer together even.
Yeah, and you reviewed that policy just within the past six months, if you recall. We did look at some components to that, one of which was, again, the, I believe it was the recording of meetings, so the, the policy was out there and being reviewed.
Different, different thing.
Well, it's still part of that policy, but if there's some other things in there that you're, you're interested in looking at and reviewing, please bring them to my attention. We can bring them. We do have a policy meeting that's coming up.
Well, I just did.
Again, a little bit deeper detail into what inside that policy you're looking at would be helpful.
I'll give you the name of it and the title.
Thank you.
Ms. Deroff, Ms. Deroff, can I, I'm sorry, can I have that policy number again?
It, it will be on, in the Policy May, 003 Functions, Evaluation of Board Procedures. You're welcome. The other thing, I, I read over the course for the Virtual Academy and I'd like to know how many students we have in there and in what, I guess it'd be the subject areas because I briefly added that up and it's way over $200,000. And I know other schools, they don't charge at all. They're, they don't pay their teachers at all extra. That's part of their daily duties somehow.
I can, I can speak specifically to that and we did investigating that and I'm, if you can share with us another district that does not, that's part of their extra duties, I would love to hear about it because we did investigate that. Currently, the, the ballpark numbers, because it fluctuates a little bit, the total cost of the Boyer Town Air Virtual Program Platform is $424,000. It supports about approximately 139 students at the end of last year. Again, the new numbers will happen this year as we progress forward. If we were to project out at a minimal of $12,000 per student, that would be approximately a $1.668 million cost to the district. It costs us, I mean, we save with $424,102 from last year, approximately $1.2 million in running our own virtual program if we were to lose all these students to outside virtual programs. So, we did give those numbers to the board last year, so that's just an update of what the estimated costs or cost savings would be by running our own program. But I would love to know another district that has it as an extension of what's happening in their current platform, so if you could share that with me, I would like to hear that.
Well, I'll check around again if there was.
Well, please, because I would love to hear about that and I will reach out to them immediately to learn about that.
Okay, where do you want to learn how to do it?
No, I feel like we've put a robust program in place. I would like to know your reference point to an outside district that has it as an ongoing extra responsibility that teachers are not, that are not supported financially for. So, if you can share that, I would love it.
Okay, well, some of the teachers with different subject areas that are on our, our sheet, they have three and four. they have three and four classes, or I don't know if I should call them classes or what to call them, but they're getting three or four different pays, and they're still teaching full-time, correct?
That's why they're, um, going above and beyond the duty of their day. That's why the stipend and the MOU that was agreed upon back in, um, I believe we proposed that in May, um, and you agreed aboard for, as a board.
Right, but that wasn't my question. Again, let me finish. How can they teach, like, four or five, four, say, four classes and still be able to do, what do they take, teach, five? Nor, five regular classes?
It, it depends, but, um, the reason they're compensated for this, it goes, it goes beyond their school day. This is not a requirement that's during the school day. It goes beyond that instructional day for them.
But they're still doing their five norm classes?
They are doing their regular coursework, correct?
Right, okay. It's a question I had, and, uh... How, I don't know how to ask this. How many students are in, I was told there's some classes that only have one or two students in. Is that correct? For the virtual?
There are certain classes, sections that are run by only, um, there are only, um, a handful of students. That's why the ranges in the MOU are part of what they're compensated for. And I don't have the MOU right in front of me, but, um, there's a compensation range that goes along with the amount of students that are supported. Um, just, just as a reminder, if we would lose a student to an outside cyber, we wouldn't offer that. It's a pretty extensive cost to the district if we don't, if we don't, um, provide some sort of comparative support for students to be, um, instructed virtually.
Okay, one more question. I'm getting calls about lockers. Can anybody tell me what's going on with the lockers at the high school?
What's the question?
Well, I don't know. Some people are saying they, their stu- their student has to pay fifty dollars for a locker. And I said, what teacher is charging it? Then I don't hear nothing, but I, I got like four phone calls already. And I said, well, is this a sports locker, a music locker, you know, something besides our normal locker? And they said, no, and you have to ask for a locker. None of it was making sense. So, I would like to know, is there a deal with the, I'm not accusing anybody. I'd just like to know, is there a deal going on with the lockers?
Yeah, w- w- without a specific question, I don't know, and I've not heard anything related to lockers, so what?
Each child gets their own locker.
You're talking just that bash?
Yes.
Okay, so, we, I'll have to ask, uh...
I have heard something on that, too, and it is not true. What has happened, and the reason I know this is because my granddaughter is a ninth grader. They are not being given lockers. If they want a locker, they must ask for one. They will get one. They are allowed to have their book bags with them because of their location and where they might be at the end of the day. So, they are not being given a locker unless they per se, they ask for one. If they ask for one, they are given one. But they carry their book bags around.
Yeah, and that's pretty par for the course, um, in today's school world, and that, um... Most of our students opt not to have a locker in any way, shape, or form, and those that would do, do like the, to have one, or, or just, as, as was stated, um, they're, they're given the opportunity to have that. So, I, I, I had not heard anything about being charged for, um... I, I'll confirm that with Mr. Sparks, but I believe what Ms. Nyman shared is, is probably very, very accurate.
Yeah, there will be some legal issues.
Correct, correct.
That's how I answered a phone call when I got it. Uh, there, there says nobody being charged fifty dollars, which is what I said.
Correct.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I knew what to say. Thank you. I think I'm done now.
Mr. Rofey? Ms. Up to Grove?
Just want to, uh, welcome all of our new teachers. That video was great to see faces of everyone, um, who's joining Boyertown, and I also just want to wish all of our students and staff a safe and exciting school year.
Just want to wish all our students, staff, and teachers, uh, welcome back and hope for a great year.
That takes us to the upcoming meeting dates and announcements. Uh, we will begin our, uh, committee structure, uh, starting in September, beginning with our Finance Committee Meeting, and, um, that will begin six o'clock here prior to the committee whole, or, and we'll follow up at, uh, in front of the Legislative Meeting on the twenty-third with a Policy Committee. Um, we will certain, be certain to have zero-zero-three on that to answer all the questions related to the functions of Board, um, and any other policies that the Board so chooses from the, um, the committee members to, to bring forward, to discuss, uh, followed by a Legislative Meeting on the twenty-third.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.